All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Becky Ruby. I'm third ward alderwoman along with Dean Kilburg. I'm going to be the chair for this evening's committee of the whole meeting. The date is Monday, January 28, 2019. I'd like to welcome everyone to City Hall tonight. I'm impressed we've got a crowd braving this weather. Let the record show that Alderman Rodecki is absent and everyone else is in attendance this evening. This meeting is now called to order. Item two on the agenda is to approve committee of the whole minutes from January 14, 2019. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Bruno and a second by McGowan. A voice vote of all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Carrie is unanimously. Item three on the agenda is presentations. Tonight we have a Cultural Arts Commission art presentation. This evening we have with us -- is Tim here? Oh, there we go. Thank you. Tim Vitang and Teri Emma, if you would like to come up to the podium. They're going to introduce an artist to us also, I believe, who is donating a painting to the city. I won't take any more of your thunder.
Fortunately, the artist won't be here due to the weather this evening. But Teri and I will take care of the rest.
Okay, great.
I'm Tim Vitang. I'm chair of the Geneva Cultural Arts Commission. What's happening this evening actually started back during the Geneva Art Fair back in July when some folks from the Kane County Conservation Foundation came to our booth and were telling us about an art exhibit that they were having down at Shingothi that they had commissioned an artist to do 73 original paintings of the Fox River from the north end of Kane County to the south end. And it might be something we were interested in. And then a little while later, we heard from the History Center that they are doing an exhibit that would incorporate those paintings. And they were interested in seeing if we would support the cost of some of that exhibit. In the interim, while it was being on display at Shingothi, one of our commissioners went down there and took a look at it and said, "You know, the painting of Geneva's portion of the Fox River is something that should be hanging at City Hall. We don't really have any art that's of Geneva here at City Hall, and at some point it might be a nice piece for a future art center in the community." But I'm not sure, maybe after you see it, maybe City Hall won't want to give it up. So she -- it was Jan Schmuckel, the commissioner, who owns a business here in town, Gallery 38. And she said, "I will donate $1,000 if the commission will cover the rest of the cost to purchase this painting." Because there was some concern, all of the paintings were for sale, some of them had already been sold, that this painting may not be available for the History Museum's exhibit this year. And the owner may not want to part with it for a few months. And we thought it belonged at City Hall on a long-term basis. So we hurriedly discussed it, spoke with City Hall. They thought it was a great idea, particularly after they saw what the painting looked like because it was on the Internet. And so we were able to secure ownership of the painting. At this point, I'd like to have -- so we're very grateful to Jan for her generous donation that covered a good part of the cost. She also saw to it that the painting was framed, so it was an appropriate frame for City Hall here. So at this point, I'd like to introduce Teri Emma, executive director of the Geneva History Museum, to tell you the rest of the story.
Thanks, Tim. Thank you for having me here this evening. I'm very excited. And Tim, thank you. So this whole thing kind of happened by chance for the museum. We were hoping to showcase some of our artwork from our collection, which are very old paintings that some are not framed, some are in very bad shape. So here, we had this grandiose idea that we could get it done. And when reality set in that we couldn't get it done, our curator, Jessica, happened to be working on a Saturday, and the Conservation Foundation walked in with this brochure about this artwork. And she said, "Oh, my gosh, Teri, this would be awesome because if we had their artwork in our feature gallery, we could still showcase some of our artwork in the hallway, but not have to fill the whole gallery because that's just too big of an object for us at this time." So it actually came to help us a little bit. And once we got to learn more about this entire project and Joel Schisely, the artist, it's phenomenal. His art is beautiful. As Tim told you, he went for two years in all weather from west Dundee down to Ottawa. I'm now inspired. I've never been -- I have kayaks and we boat, and I have never been south of this area. You have to see what that looks like, and you'll be inspired by these paintings. It's a completely different Fox River when you get south of Yorkville. So that's my new -- my goal for next year is to get in our kayaks and go. But you have to come to the museum, check it out. The exhibit will open this Friday evening. I've given you all an invitation at your dais there. You do have to register to be within our liquor code of the City of Geneva as a members-only VIP event, so please register on our website if you'd like to attend. We'd love to have you as our special VIP guests. Joel will be there that evening at 6:30 PM. He'll give a brief presentation of his experience over those two years. And I'll have to tell you, Joel is -- I wish he could be here. He called me just a little while ago. He felt really bad. He lives in Wheaton, and it was really coming down. And I said, "You know what? Don't go." He felt really bad about the Cultural Arts Commission purchasing this painting, and then he can't be here to unveil it. So I just said, "You know, you've got to let it go. It's all right." But come Friday night, come and meet him. I think you will absolutely love his presentation. His artwork is like photographs, which is -- I think he doesn't -- he's like, "Well, why don't I just take pictures then?" But his artwork is really compelling, and it's part of our history here in Geneva. The gallery will be up through May 24th, so this painting this evening will be back in the museum tomorrow and on display through May 24th. You can come back to City Hall and see it in the business office as you enter off of First Street after that time. And we really thank the Cultural Arts Commission and the Geneva Foundation for the Arts. Both of those committees were very receptive to my request for funding because there was a cost to getting the museum prepared to have an art exhibit. The walls had to be painted. We had to also frame some of our artwork in the hallway, and there's always a cost to putting on a great show. And we didn't want to let Joel down. We wanted to make sure it was professionally done. So we thank both of those commissions. We thank the City of Geneva for funding and helping those commissions as well and bringing art to Geneva. We know how important that is. Another thing that the museum is going to put together is a public art walking tour along with these exhibitions this year. So patrons can come to the museum, they can purchase it. It's a paper object that they can go. It's not walkable because you can go all the way to the -- by the seminary. You can go out east to the mural on Doug Worlick's building. So it's a beyond-walking tour, but it is a public art tour, and that'll be available as well. When Joel's work comes down in May, in June, we'll have our first-ever Kane County juried art exhibition. We're still accepting submissions -- excuse me, not nominations -- submissions through April 1st. I have a pamphlet on the side over here. It's also on our website. If there are artists, they just have to be from Kane County currently or have had lived in Kane County at some point. And all art is welcome. It doesn't have to be Geneva art. It can be any type, all different textiles. We're talking metal. We're talking watercolor, obviously, drawings. So we welcome all submissions. We've had quite a few so far. It will be judged by an artist from Aurora and outside of our realm, and those will be displayed from June until November next year. I want to just let you know a little bit about Joel since he's not here to speak for himself. He's an emeritus professor of art at Wheaton College. He's a painter who -- his current work focuses on landscape. He's been a recipient of an Illinois Arts Council Artist Fellowship. He has exhibited work in Chicago galleries, and he's also had solo exhibitions at the Chicago Cultural Center. His work has also been exhibited widely in university galleries. I invite you to visit his website, visit our website, and I also invite all the community to come and see what Joel has done. The Fox River really does -- it's part of our community, whether it's this town or whether it's Ottawa, it's all part of our history here. Are there any questions from any of you? I hope you can join us.
Good.
Make sure you register. You can go to our website, register online, you can call me tomorrow. I'll be at the museum. Hope you'll all be there. It is catered, and we'll have some fun, and Joel will give a nice presentation. And Mill Race Recylery also helped us. We have a -- Joel typically paints in a canoe when he goes out, actually puts his canvas and his easel right in the canoe, and it's amazing. So he invited me in September to go follow him, and I thought it was going to be in a canoe. So I actually had a canoe all ready to go, and I was going to follow him and film him. It ended up, he didn't want to do canoe that day. He was just on the edge of the water in Batavia. But I have never been to that part. It was behind Funway. You know, you drive by Funway all the time on Route 25. You don't think much of it. You get out of your car and you walk down this path. You get an entirely different vision of the Fox River. So Gail, who's here, my museum technician, and I filmed him that morning for a couple hours, and I could not believe how this blank canvas became this beautiful piece of art, which is going to be part of our exhibition. Just within hours, he transformed and made this picture of exactly what I was looking at that morning. Thankfully, I didn't have to go in a canoe. But it was really neat to see an artist at work, plein air, right there, quite talented. So I invite you to come and see it. I think -- I know you'll enjoy it. Tell the community, tell your friends, come to the museum and enjoy Joel's work. I do want to mention, we do have a few board members here. We have Eleanor Hamilton as our president of our Board of Directors, Gloriaanne Campbell, former president of the Board of Directors, and then Gail Mears, our museum technician, is here tonight. More are going to come, but the weather kept people away.
So it's assuming they're registered. This is open to the public, then?
No. You have to be registered. You have to be a VIP member or registered only through us to go.
Okay. Got it.
That way I can serve wine. Is that correct, Jean?
I didn't have a question. I just wanted to praise like the spirit of cooperation and, you know, it seems like a win-win-win. So do you see other opportunities for this kind of work moving forward? You have the gallery space and...
Absolutely. Yes, especially as we become -- we're going for national accreditation at the museum. So the more that I can prove to other organizations that I have the ability to care for their items properly in the humidity-correct zone and temperature zone, the more that we can bring great things to this town. And we've already proven that people want to come and see. They love art. Geneva is well-known for that. Beyond art, people also love to just come downtown and enjoy whatever cultural things. I think Geneva is a great cultural center, and the more we grow and learn, the more I can bring more things to Geneva.
Yeah, I love the public art tour, and I mean, yeah, people are more and more into experiences and sort of things, but as we pull people even to different parts of town and maybe they stop and get a drink or go in a shop or...
Absolutely.
Very good. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, we learned a lot about public art, just little things that you don't always notice. There's a little bunny on the side of Paper Merchant. I learned about that and where it came from and what it's made of, and so that's all -- it'll kind of dive you in a little bit deeper into why those things are there and who made them be there.
Any other questions or comments from the dais?
Tim, I think we need to officially unveil.
Yes.
So they see this beauty. I actually wanted to buy this when I saw it. I couldn't afford it.
But it speaks to my family very much, who grew up along the river.
This is a gift from the Geneva Cultural Arts Commission and its supporters to the City of Geneva and its residents.
Oh, it's beautiful. Thank you very much. Thank you to all of you for your service and passion and commitment to the arts. It's wonderful.
I was asked to get a picture of the mayor getting the presentation, so...
Oh, is that right?
Yes, sir. Probably should have done it when I actually did it, but...
We could do a redo.
Joel was so sorry you couldn't be here for this. He felt really...
I'll just hide behind the picture.
Between all of us, I think we've got two good ones there.
Consider suspending the rules to permit Alderman Ruby to be the COW chairman for this meeting and to vote on all action items on this agenda. Do I have a motion? Thank you.
Second.
All right. Moved by Clement, seconded by Swanson. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. All right. Item 4B, consider draft resolution awarding bid and authorizing the purchase of a keyless entry card system for Fire Stations 1 and 2 from Fox Valley Fire and Safety at an estimated cost of $25,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? Okay. It's moved by Mark, seconded by McGowan. Do you want me to give an intermission? Yes, please.
So as stated, this is a request to purchase and install a keyless entry card system for Fire Station 1 and 2. It should be noted that this is a two-year project. The request is to authorize year 1 at $25,000. Fox Valley Fire and Safety was the lowest qualified quote, and year 2 has been included in the budget that you all are looking to adopt next week. Chief Antonori is present tonight if you have any additional questions.
Any discussion on this? Questions, comments? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. I guess for the sake of informing the public, Chief Antonori, could you maybe come up and explain to someone who doesn't know what the keyless entry system is for and what benefits it'll bring to the fire department?
Sure. I'm not taking money out. There isn't any...
Unless you want to buy some Girl's Got Cookies from Tara because she's, you know, taken...
I can do that later. So a keyless entry system, which is on most of the city buildings, is designed to work with the ID card, which has got an RFID chip in it. So it's a positive confirmation that the person that holds the card can enter. Right now, we have a combination lock system that we have to change every time somebody comes and goes, and they are 13 of them, and it takes a couple days, and they usually break somewhere in the process of redoing it. So this will give us positive ID and allow everybody to enter and leave and know when they're in and out of the building.
Thank you. Okay. Alderman Burkhart?
So if someone leaves the force, would they -- do you turn their card off or they have to turn their card back in?
If they don't turn their card in, we just turn it off, and then they don't have any more access. So as soon as they leave, we would disable them and hopefully get their card back. But if that didn't happen, there wouldn't be any security issues. Being a facility that has a level of protection needed gives us something that we haven't had in the past.
Thank you.
Sure.
Alderman Kilburg?
Actually, it looks like a lot of money, but the thing is, I think as you look at it over a period of time, there's actually savings because have there been instances where you needed to change locks when somebody's left?
Changed locks, replace them. Most of the locks at Station 2 are 25 years old, and they're starting to fail. And then the ones at Station 1 are now 15 years old, and they're starting to fail also. Part of that cost is infrastructure and wiring and door strikes, but I think we've been using them in the city for upwards of 10 years now-ish, 10-ish, and very reliable and much more secure. And the other added benefit is that it's also the emergency operations center. So if we ever do have to spin that up, those that sit in this room that need to get in will be able to enter. Those that we don't want to come in will not be able to enter, and we'll have some positive security on the EOC also.
Looks like a good project. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
All right, I guess we can vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Item 4C, consider draft resolution waiving the bidding process and authorizing execution of a contract with Try Our Systems, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $57,500 for SCADA improvements to lift stations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Burkhart.
And Stephanie, would you like to give a...
The fiscal year '19 budget allocated $85,000 to improve communications from the sanitary lift stations to the SCADA system located at the wastewater treatment plant. The goal of this project is to be able to see what is occurring at the lift station and communicate remotely with the station, thus reducing emergency callouts and reduce the number of routine site visits to the stations. Try Our Systems has been the contractor for the SCADA maintenance upgrades and installations. The proposal is under budget at $57,500, and as such, staff is recommending waiving competitive bidding for this project. We have both Director Babica and Superintendent Mangaskam here if there are any additional questions.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Try Our Systems, they have previous -- they have previously been competitors in a competitive bid environment before?
Try Our Systems has been the sole provider for the city's SCADA system for the water and wastewater utilities since 2001. So all the previous projects -- correction, that's not accurate. They've actually been the sole provider, with the exception of 2001, going back into the '80s and '90s. The reason why we want to stay with Try Our Systems is twofold. The first is that they are a known service provider to the city. They are basically integrating multimillion dollars' worth of the city's infrastructure into a seamless application. The lift stations are basically islands. When we get alarms from the lift stations, they come in through a dial-up system, and it's a general dumb alarm. It's power or a pump. By tying it into the SCADA system, the operators will be able to tell remotely through the remote access what the exact issue is and whether it warrants a call-out or if it's something that can be dealt with during business hours. The second reason why we want to go with Try Our Systems is that cybersecurity has become a critical threat to the infrastructure, not just for the city, but to the entire nation, if not world. And every time you bring in a new vendor, whether they say it or not, they put backdoors in to allow them easy access if they have to make programming changes. And by allowing a second vendor into the system, there's that potential for another hack. And the last time we did bring in an outside contractor was in 2001, when there were SCADA systems conducted at the wastewater plant. And one of the projects that we're completing basically right now is removing that -- those enhancements from the city's SCADA system and replacing it with something that works because, quite honestly, we had never fully integrated into the existing SCADA platform. So for those reasons, we're recommending to the city council that we waive competitive bidding and stay with Try Our Systems, a known company that city staff has built an exceptional working relationship with since the late '90s, mid-'90s.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I think we're ready to vote. All right. Voice vote of all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. All right. Item 4D, consider draft resolution authorizing a change order from Council Burnett in the added amount of $5,563.27, increasing the total amount of the labor contract to $335,563.27 for Western Avenue Substation general construction project. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Bruno, seconded by Marks.
Sure. As stated, this is a request for a change order as due to unforeseen circumstances during construction of the concrete transformer pad for the new Western Avenue substation. So there's additional work that needed to be required under the contract that wasn't foreseen. Again, we have Rich Babica with us this evening to answer any additional questions. There's also more information in the packet.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. A voice vote of all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Item E, lots of numbers. Pay attention. Consider draft resolution awarding bid and authorizing a contract with J. Congdon Sewer Service, Inc. at a cost of $724,750.76, and to allow the city administrator to approve up to $72,474.24 in change orders for a total not to exceed amount of $797,225 for 2019 Water Main Rehabilitation Project. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Bruno and a second?
Second.
Seconded by Clements. Thank you.
Okay, so the contract that's before you this evening is for water main construction related to the Union Pacific Third Rail Project and water system improvements in the area by the Kane County Cougar Stadium. There were 10 bids that were received, and the low bidder is being recommended. Due to the complexity of the project, staff is recommending that a 10% contingency be included in the overall not-to-exceed amount to account for any unforeseen field changes that may occur. Any such changes would require city administrator approval. Superintendent Mangaskam is with us this evening to answer any additional questions.
Questions or comments? Okay. All right, seeing none, hearing none. A voice vote of all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. Item 4F, discussion on fiscal year '20 draft budget.
Again, this is a time period set aside if the council has any additional questions on the budget that was presented several weeks ago. As we've indicated in the past, questions that have been asked throughout the process have been posted to the city's website for review for anybody who would like to look at those. It is anticipated or will have the public hearing next Monday, February 4th, and then anticipated that the council would adopt the budget at that time.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, a voice vote?
No.
Oh, no voice vote? Okay, never mind. Sorry. I'm on a roll. All right. Item 5, new business, public comment. Anything from the dais this evening? Okay, Stephanie?
I just wanted to let everybody know that we did receive notice from Lake Shore Recycling that refuse collection this week will be delayed one day. They will not be collecting, I believe, on Wednesday, so therefore our services will be delayed. So Thursday will be Friday, Friday will be Saturday. We'll also put out notice on the website and through our usual social media channels.
Thank you. Alderman Bruno?
Madam Chair, just as if people didn't know, I just wanted the public...
I just wanted the public to recognize we have some life-threatening cold coming in. Do be careful out there. Don't travel if you don't have to. Trickle your water if you think your pipes might freeze. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. And Alderman Maladra?
So in the context of life-threatening cold, Wednesday being the supposedly coldest day ever, we have a policy meeting scheduled that night. Do we really want to come out for that, or is there a chance that we could postpone that meeting a week, two weeks, a month? I just wanted to see what the feeling was here.
I agree. I think it's a good idea to look and see if there's another date available in the near future that would work.
So again, this is a council kind of directed policy discussion. We can -- we picked kind of fifth Mondays, fifth Wednesdays, so we have some dates that are already out on the calendar that we can just move this to one of those dates, or if there's another date, council decides. But I kind of -- the sooner we know whether we're doing it Wednesday or not doing it Wednesday, then the better. So certainly, it's the will of the council.
Alderman Kilburg?
I'd move that we postpone this special committee of the whole meeting until a latter date. Maybe staff could come back with an option or two for us by next Monday night when we meet again.
meet again.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion to postpone our...
To a date uncertain.
Okay. Okay, so, a voice vote is sufficient? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Okay. Just one thing that I wanted to share, congratulations to the Geneva High School dancers. IHSA State Dance Competition last Friday in Bloomington. The Geneva High School team placed 3rd in the Class 2A competition, so congrats to the high school girls. Okay. Any other new business? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to all the Public Works staff and their employees who've been working really hard under these very, very wintry, cold conditions, keeping the roads clear and trying to keep ahead of all the snow that keeps coming down. So, they're out there working hard, and I'm sure that, I just want them, I hope they know that the public appreciates the efforts that they're putting forth. It's really, it's great what they're doing, and that's all. Thank you to them.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. The city's doing a great job keeping everything clear and accessible. Thank you very much. Your team's doing great, Rich. Alderman Kellberg?
For the benefit of the public, I don't know if everyone is aware of it or not, but US Postal Services will not be making deliveries on Tuesday or Wednesday of this week due to the weather.
Okay, thank you. I had not heard that.
So, anybody that's tuning in tonight, there's nothing in your mailbox the next couple of days. It's not that...
What about the rain, no rain, sleet, snow? If it's 50 below, it doesn't matter?
And I would point out, too, that, that city facilities are warming facilities during regular business hours, and then fire after-hours. Is that correct?
24 hours.
24 hours. So, the information is available on our website again as usual, but did want to let people know that there are those services available.
Thank you. All right. All right, any other new business or public comments from the audience? Anyone? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.